To order, and you know, we have two Boy Scouts in the audience. I'd like to ask them to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Come on up, come on up further. Okay. Thanks, gentlemen. A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, gentlemen. These two young Boy Scouts are here working on their citizenship badge, so welcome. The roll, please.
Belkey.
Here.
Belzak.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Marques.
Here.
MacIver.
Here.
Shower.
Here.
Seifert. Six present, one absent. We have a quorum. The next item is questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. We have this at the beginning of our city council agenda for the, to give an opportunity to residents to address the council on any subject matter. It does not have to be a subject matter that's on the city council agenda for this evening, but if they have any questions that they'd like to ask of the city council, please feel free to come forward to ask those questions. And let's move on to, oh, I'm sorry, come on up. Pull that microphone down so you can, yeah.
Good evening. Carolyn Heinrich, and I reside at eighty-five thirty-five Harvest Lane, Darian. And my question is, we're trying to find out who the property owner or the realtor is for eighty-five twenty-three. The property is not kept up. The grass and the weeds need to be taken care of, especially the weeds, and all of us neighbors are getting a little disturbed about it.
Now, that's eighty-five twenty-three Harvest?
Yes.
Okay, is that, Scott, is that a location we've been aware of?
I don't remember that being one of the locations, but we can definitely sense.
Well, okay, we'll follow, and your, can you give us your name again and your contact information?
Carolyn Heinrich, H.E.I.N.R.I.C.H., and I reside at eighty-five thirty-five Harvest Lane.
Okay.
There have been a number of rentals in that property, and, you know, I've already complained.
Is that that corner lot, Carol?
Yes, it is.
Okay, they've had some issues even with a child there who was just wandering the streets. My wife found the child, unfortunately, the police just sort of snuck out, so it's not too well monitored.
There's new people in there. I believe it's a military family. They haven't, they've only been in there probably maybe two months or something like that.
We will, thanks Carolyn for bringing it to our attention. We will definitely get our staff busy at looking at that location.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One question for you, Carolyn. Did you contact someone at the city about that property?
I complained last year about it.
Okay, so it probably is on Mike's list, because we have a few, and I live in that neighborhood as well.
Yeah. This is your alderman, by the way.
Yeah, how are you?
I watch that every week. It's not, hasn't been on the list, so it's good that you call it to our attention.
Thank you very much.
Scott, maybe you can just real quickly explain what we'll do in a case like this, because sometimes if we can get ahold of the realtor or somebody, we maybe can get a cut right away, but if there's no cooperation, our notice, period?
Certainly, well, especially if there's a realtor sign on there that gives us a good telephone number to hopefully contact very quickly. Other times when there's a vacant home, there's a list for a property management group with a sign on the door that says, "Call this number." That's usually the easiest situation. What we do at that same time is send out a letter that goes through the mail and it could go to a forwarding address notifying them of all the code violations on the property and giving them a certain amount of time to remediate those. If it's not done at that end of that letter, then the city actually goes and then cuts the property and leans it, but that usually takes around two weeks, so that's not the preferred method, because we want to get it taken care of as quickly as possible.
If there is a house though that we've given notice to once, that will suffice for the summer?
Yes.
And then we'll just keep it on a rote, on a more frequent cut?
We put a notice on the door that says, "We've sent a notice. The city's cutting the grass until you stop that," and we continually lean the property until it's taken care of.
Thanks.
Okay, so that's how we handle that. But thank you for bringing that to our attention. All right, let's move on to the approval of minutes. The minutes of June sixteen, two thousand fourteen. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belkey. Any additions or deletions for the clerk? I believe we had one typo that we took care of. Okay. Any other additions or deletions? Then the roll, please. Shower.
Aye.
Belkey.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Marques.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
MacIver.
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent. The minutes have been approved, and the next item is receiving of communications. And I just want to say, under this topic, that I would like to thank the Lions Club for a wonderful parade, "Brand New Route," and we didn't know how it would be accepted, but it seems to have been a real positive for, from what we've heard from residents. So I wanted to thank the Lions Club all for all their efforts in putting that together. I know what a, it's a year-long task, I know. Also, I'd like to thank our Public Works Department, because they were responsible for putting up the no parking signs and helping to clean up after the event. So I know we received an email from Jerry Pickley, who is a sergeant in our police department, but also a Lions Club member, who happened to thank our Public Works Department for a job well done. Other communications. Alderman MacIver.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think you were copying on this as well. I just got it actually in my mailbox, the letter regarding South Grove Park.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so I don't know, has that been communicated to Dan? Obviously, it's something to work out with the Park District. If anything, you know, has, apparently, they have, you know, contacted Public Works, so I have it for record.
Well, you know, I was emailing, a number of emails today regarding this issue, because we have the park and then we have the pond issue over in your subdivision, Firmandale Ridge.
The village.
Yeah, and I, in the village.
Village.
I'm sorry. And I was troubled by the fact that this has been an ongoing issue, and we still haven't got it resolved, either one of these issues. So I asked Dan to address this and get this moving, especially with the Park District. Either, what did you, have you discovered anything since we communicated?
Yes, matter of fact, Alderman MacIver, I apologize for not forwarding it to you, but we received it late morning, and I did forward it to Mayor Weaver and Alderman, Brian Vanna, as they were copied on there. So regardless, I did reach out to Stephanie, and the issue, I believe, I want to make sure everyone understands, the pond, it was an issue with the existing algae.
It's not algae.
Well, I'll consider it's a type of...
It's a plant growth.
Yeah, it's plant growth.
Plant growth, you know, and you can control it to a certain degree. Right now, it's my understanding that it's being controlled.
Yeah, I mean, when I drove by over the weekend, I did not see it in the, off of Beller where I usually see it.
Correct, you know, is that, does the rains have something to do with it? It's possible, because the water keeps on moving. So I know that also that the Park District has had it treated for, I believe...
Several, four times.
Four to, yeah.
Yeah, they've already, and they installed new aerators.
Correct.
Those are working.
As far as the issue with the pond, it's currently under control. The second issue was with the park, which is a detention facility. Obviously, that was deeded over from Gallagher and Henry to the Park District. In conjunction with that, there's an underdrain system in there, and that underdrain system, while it functions, it's not designed to take on stormwater of significant magnitude. So if there's some ponding, yes, it'll stay there for a day, possibly up to two days. The detention facilities, and the detention facilities that were constructed back then were designed to hold water for a period of twenty-four to forty-eight hours. Unfortunately, the grading within that park itself is not to today's standards, if you want to say. So there are some low spots, divots, in which case does cause additional ponding. In conjunction with that, some of the grass cutting that's been, that gets completed there, the grass is left high. As it's left high, water fills up those basins, and then all of a sudden, as the basins take the water out of there, the grass clippings go on top of these storm sewers, or underdrains, if you want to say, at the inlets, and they clog them. So somebody has to physically go out there and unclog them, but they have to also come back within an hour or two hours and unclog them again, because they're so small. So it's not an easy solution, and the answer is not putting in bigger pipes or bigger structures, because the underdrain that's in there is basically an appeasing element of the facility.
Dan, would that be a location that we could, would consider doing native plantings?
I thought, I looked, as a matter of fact, I had a conversation I had with Stephanie today was twofold. One, for a different potential project, on wetland enhancements, and this could be also a contender for an enhancement, possibly a pond or a wetland feature, too, which we do have some funding from DuPage County from the stormwater that, from the construction on Seventy-Fifth Street. Also, there's some, there may be some grants that are available. Obviously, it's a, it's a long process, just, you know, from resident input to additional grants, amenities, features, whatever way I'm going to look at it.
All right, how are we going to go forward on this, then?
My suggestion is, if everyone is in favor of possibly looking at that facility as a wet bottom, semi-moist, or with plantings, I'll call them wetland plantings or native plantings.
Well, that would have to go through the Park District, right?
Correct.
Okay.
But we, in concert with them, would help them, because part of it's our system that comes into...
So we would make recommendations to them and try to help them, implement them, but still, they have the, they have the ability to say what they want to do with that, correct?
Correct.
But isn't the property, isn't the, isn't that detention area ours?
It's not, that's not, that wasn't, that wasn't deeded in the Park District, was it?
It's my understanding that it's the Park District.
I think it's all part of, yeah, I think it's all part of South Grove Park, I think. It's like, it's dry detention, you know, but it's...
It's not always dry.
Well, it's not always dry.
Right, the confusion always is, is that Gallagher and Henry basically deeded these facilities...
As is.
Right, to the parks. In most cases, to the parks. The problem is, is that we have infrastructure that comes in and goes out for the collector's streets or the arterial streets, rear yards, whatever the case is. So there's physical structures in there, and those are storm sewer structures. If those storms, if those storm structures don't work, it becomes the city's responsibility to fix and maintain them. So that's something that's been out there for a number of years. There's no unclarity, where today, the last ten years, there's been more clarity to who owns what and who's responsible for things.
Well, I like the idea of moving forward, and as Alderman MacIver suggested, too, is let's get the Park District involved and suggest to them maybe, you know, doing a wet bottom or native plantings. Get this thing moving.
Okay, we'll have a conversation with them. I'm not sure if there's any amenities in it, as far as playground equipment?
No, no, there's nothing there. No, they, I mean, they use it like soccer fields, you know.
Well, unfortunately, you know, our...
But they're, they're not really, it just says, it's park area, that's all.
Well, all of the Gallagher, all the Gallagher and Henry developments, all of the detention areas were deeded over to somebody, and, you know, what did we, what did we do with them? That's the only property we ever got from Gallagher and Henry for some of these subdivisions, which is a little bothersome, you know. Some of them have been turned into parks, like the one over in your ward, Alderman Kenny. That's a very large...
And that's a problem park, too, as well. Holly Park, for example, or Birchwood Park. Holly Parks, matter of fact, there's floods every time there's, you know, intense rainfalls. So again, they were designed, well, that one's not a full detention pond, as the Gallagher and Henry issue is in your...
Yeah, because when they developed that, it was on Incorporated Downers Grove. We inherited it. So it wasn't, you know, I guess when they developed whatever that storm sewer system is underneath that area, it probably went through the county, I suppose, for approval, correct, Dan?
It did go through the county, but also at the times, detention, or I should say, stormwater ordinances weren't in effect. So it's basically, in a nutshell, you dig the hole, put some pipes in there, now you hold water, as long as you held it for a period of time.
We keep inheriting DuPage County's problems, don't we?
Yes.
So I guess as a follow-up to this resident, maybe I can get, if, do we have a way to get the phone number for this resident, because it's not on the letter?
What we could do is, I'll follow up with Stephanie, first of all, on a conversation from the city council.
Okay.
And then have a meeting with her to see if there's, if they want us to reach out to the city, excuse me, to the resident, or if they would like to reach out to the resident at this point.
Okay, yeah, if you'd let me know, so I know whether or not to do anything with it.
I'll forward a copy.
So the one, the letter from Dan Bowers of Grandview Place was regarding the park area.
Correct.
Tina Nedball is the individual, the resident, that emailed us about the pond.
Correct.
Okay, so, all right, so we need to get back to both of these residents. Thank you. Thank you. Any other communications? Alderman Shower.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Speaking of inheriting DuPage County's problems, I've gotten a bunch of postings on my Facebook page, basically people sitting in traffic on Seventy-Fifth Street and putting items out saying how mad they are and how upset they are with the alderman for passing this project, and who was involved in this and everything. And the reason I'm bringing this up, I want to tell everybody and reiterate, I'm going to turn this over to Dan, but this is a twelve million dollar DuPage County project that's only in Darian, okay? Twelve million dollar DuPage County project. Everything that's passed with this street getting fixed is all because of DuPage County. We're frustrated, too. In fact, Dan, this is where I want to turn it over to you and tell you, ask you to say some of the things that happened before and that we've done, you know, behind the scenes to try and make it a little bit easier for us in Darian, so.
Sure. Alderman Shower spoke to me briefly about this situation and in a Facebook situation. I don't have Facebook, no.
Good for you.
Basically, the staff attends weekly meetings. These weekly meetings are referred to as progress meetings. We have been very adamant with schedules, number one, schedules. They're behind schedules, no secrets to that. Whatever there's a concern, we intervene, whether it's through other agencies, such as ComEd. Recently, there's been an issue with a company called United Fiber. We've gotten down to the bottom of that. So we're very proactive on making sure that construction is moving along. One of the things that we consistently stress is that if there's no work in the lane, the lane should not be shut down. Cass Avenue, and this is a good segue for what's happening this week, Cass Avenue between Plainfield and Seventy-Fifth Street will basically be two lanes, two lanes, one lane for the south, one lane for the north, with a center turning ring, turning, turning lane, I should say. With that said, they have, Central Blacktop, who is the general contractor, has a contract incentive that they need to fit, they finish this road within, I believe it's, I'd have to double check, twenty-five or twenty days, working days, it's not the same as calendar days, that they had, they get a bonus. For every day they're not, they're behind on the contract, it's a five thousand dollar a day penalty. So there's a real incentive for them to get Cass Avenue done. And Cass Avenue is very complicated. Just so everyone knows, there's a, I believe it's a thirty-six to forty-eight inch DuPage Water Commission line in the middle of the road there. There's an existing storm sewer line, sanitary, water main, our water main, NiCor gas, Illinois Bell or Ameritech, whatever they're called today. And the size of the storm sewer that's being put in is a huge storm sewer, it's a forty-eight inch. So with the, just think of the wall of the storm sewers as tall as me, for example. So that's how tall, you know, some of the infrastructure, massive infrastructure that's going in, and that infrastructure is replacing some of the deteriorated culvert metal pipes, which I think a lot of you have seen on site already. So it's really moving along. Wish we could all say it could be done overnight, but please feel free to give us a call. We'll be more than happy to give you the processes. Also, we share on a weekly report, the progress, minutes, meetings, and anyone who would like a copy of that, we'd be more than happy to forward it to them as well.
Thank you. Yes, I think, I think a lot of people are thinking this is Darian's project and are very angry with us when we don't have a whole lot to do with it, except make sure they move as fast as they can. Thank you. Any other communications, Alderman Kenny?
I have three. Ted, by the way, they shouldn't be on the phone while driving. You might want to talk to the chief on that one, okay? I do have three communications, however. Hal Greenwood, seventy-four hundred block of Adams, was concerned with easements in the back adjacent to District sixty-one, Lake School. Who covers the easement as far as taking care of the electric boxes around his home? And so I kind of said, I gave him an answer he wasn't going to like, but he was, he was fine with that. Allison, I'm going to chop up your name, please forgive me. DeBuzinski on the eighteen hundred block of Holly is concerned with all the landscapers that come on with their high sound machines. It's funny, she called me on my way home, and by the time she was done calling, I was on a driveway. And well, why don't you come on out, we can, we can talk about it. I think she was, she was shocked that somebody was on her driveway that fast. And then we have a water issue, Dan and I, and we've been talking with John Strauss on the nineteen hundred block of Gigi Lane. Apparently, his, the streets flood in front of his house. Now, granted, you can all go by it an hour later, and the water has subsided, but every time we have a heavy rain, he's got about a foot of water up his driveway. So we're seeing what we can do to accommodate that.
Okay, thank you. Other communications? Alderman Belkey?
Yeah, I received a communication from Chris Sont on Seventy-First Street, who is located across the street from Darian Park. And he had a concern last council meeting where there was some violations of no parking, some restrictions that, you know, are on that Seventy-First Street, and people were just parking there anyway. So he wanted to thank myself and the police staff to, that jumped in right away and actually implemented a plan that was in time for this Wednesday's, last Wednesday's market, farmer's market. So he, he communicated and said that what we did worked fine. I know there was rain, but it still looked like there was a great turnout. So I said, "That's wonderful news, but to still keep us in the loop, you know, as these farmer's markets keeps, keeps going through the summer."
Thank you. Other communications? Let's move on to the mayor's report, and I have no report. City clerk's report.
Just one item, Madam Mayor. Please join us for the meet and greet with Mayor Weaver, which will be held on Monday, July twenty-first at six p.m. here at City Hall in the upstairs conference room.
Let's move to city administrator's report.
No report, Mayor Weaver.
Let's move to department head information or questions. Any of you going to address us this evening?
I just have one comment, Madam Mayor. Our concrete program, we've extended the deadline to July thirty-first, so if residents want to participate with any type of concrete removal and replacement on the private, private property side, that's the driveway, as well as their sidewalk and/or apron and curb and gutter, depressing their curb and gutter, please give us a call. Like I said, we've extended the program to July thirty-first. The contractors coming back for August and September, yes.
A question. On the streets that were doing the ditches this year, and where you had to cut up a residence driveway to, you know, put in the culvert pipes, what do we do? Do we go back and just replace it with asphalt?
What we'll do is we'll evaluate the entire driveway. If it's concrete, goes back in as concrete. If there's currently asphalt in place, we put in asphalt. If they current, if they still have stone in place, we will do the first fifteen feet with asphalt. The reason we do that is just to be able to control that stone from being washed away back into the ditches, and then when, and if they ever expire or upgrade, then it requires to do the rest of the driveway with a service.
A question was broached to me by a resident that is on one of those streets that is having the ditch work done. What if the resident wants to totally replace their driveway with brick pavers? Would we give them some sort of compensation for the portion that we took out to put in the culvert?
If, in other words, they had an asphalt driveway currently?
Well, I'm not sure which type they have. I just, you know, posed the question. So I, they're, they're thinking of completely changing their...
The answer is yes.
You would compensate them for that portion that we cut out?
Correct. Whether it's concrete or whether it's asphalt, it will be done
Okay.
in conjunction with the unit prices on file.
So they just have to ask? Can they just have to ask us for a consideration?
Yes.
Okay. Alderman Shower?
Yeah, Dan, any updates from last Monday's storm with all the trees down or the extra branches and everything?
We were, we lucked out fairly well. We had some, you know, just, I'll call it minor damage, in comparison to some of the surrounding communities. We did extend the branch pickup, brush pickup till today. Our crews are still out there picking up. We anticipate being completed by Wednesday at this point.
Dan, I have a question on that concrete program. Would that, could residents contact the same company about, like, a concrete patio?
Yes, but we don't have any type of...
Pricing for that.
Correct.
So, so they, they would just be, they could contact and get a price, but it's not the city's price?
Right, I would highly encourage it to shop around, because obviously, these are production, production crews.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for any of the staff?
I have a question for Brian. Brian, we went through the, the audit, you know, and one of the questions, you know, everyone on the council receives a fraud questionnaire.
Yes.
And one of the questions refers to, let me be specific here. Give me a second. The question is, oh, the reporting, "How management communicates reports to the city council, issues related to potential fraud risk and internal control importance, design, and monitoring." I don't know that we've ever had a specific discussion on what our controls are, and I wondered if it was worthwhile to have that as a city manager's update for purposes of the viewing audience at some time.
Well, we do that every year as Admin Finance Committee.
Right.
They took a more in-depth look at that. We could certainly update the council, you know, all the council members on things. I don't know, and I have to think back a little bit about how we do that or not, because I know the management letter addresses certain things that would be covered under, under, under that topic.
Correct, but when they ask each of the elected officials, I think specifically, is this communicated, you know, effectively?
Yeah.
I sit there and think, well, you know, I'm not sure that we, you know, we actually, other than the outside firm, like whoever we have hired, comes in and presents that, but internally, I don't know that we've ever had a...
Well, we do. The internal, the management letter is, is where the, the sickage gives us what they think we should improve. We respond, and all of us receive that report.
Sylvia, I guess maybe I can address that a little bit for you. I agree with you. It is sort of a bog, I don't want to say a bogus question.
It is.
They're required to ask that question under their accounting pronouncements.
Right.
But it is sort of goofy. They're asking you
Right.
what, whether the internal controls are adequate and appropriate, or if you have any issues with them, which is the main reason why we hire them, because as the mayor and Brian indicated.
Right, so it is, it's kind of a...
At Finance Committee, we ask them, and they do bring up some things that could be, I mean, yeah, some, in some cases, you'd have to hire two more people to get total control of things, but they are monitored, and they're monitored by the auditors. But what they're looking for there is your response. Basically, it's a CYA-type concept.
Right.
Where they're getting a response back from you, saying, "No, I don't, I don't have any idea, any issues with the internal control. Seems to be working okay. So-and-so's writing the checks, Mike's reviewing and signing them or whatever." So they're basically covering their butt, but at the same time, we're looking to them when they're doing the audit report and their comments to us, and that's what we do, go in more detail with the Finance Committee. In the planning meeting, I try and give them some things where I, that I would like them to look a little bit more thoroughly at, because they don't do one hundred percent job on every aspect of this. Every year, they try and rotate around different aspects, and I try and give them some things that I, in particular, would like them to look at. So they do sort of rotate around it from year to year, which is good. And again, this year, I had a meeting with, well, again, in the planning meeting, I said I'd like them to look particularly at payroll and payroll controls and the way things are reported and reviewed there, because in payroll, we have a lot of different people that are involved with the numbers, and so I've asked them to pay particular attention. I haven't seen the results yet. They have finished the audit.
But again, that's the outside firm doing it.
That's the outside firm, yeah.
And that's not the way they phrase the question.
They're asking you for this.
The question is, is how, you know, how do we internally do that? And, you know, the answer would be, you know, I'm pretty confident, but, you know, it's not like we get a presentation per se.
We, all of us seven members here are not micromanaging that.
Correct, right. So it's difficult to answer that question that they pose.
But what you're looking to, and maybe what we can do as part of one of the Finance Committee meetings, and maybe it would be appropriate when the auditors are there presenting it, try and make it a little bit longer, and maybe make it a committee of the whole, where they could maybe point out the way we are handling things, because again, they're sitting there for two weeks essentially evaluating who exactly is responsible for each step of the process. And maybe that would be a good thing to review with you, since they are asking you, are you being communicated that? And I know, I personally have not communicated it to you.
Right.
And I myself have had some questions about it.
Right, even if it's high level, and again, I think the taxpayers and, you know, the community would be interested, you know, because you see these things come up in the news now and then, and, you know, I think it would give people peace of mind, knowing that...
Well, you know, we have, we have Sickich or the representative, the lead, the lead accountant on our audit communants, and that's the, that's the time when we should do this, you know, get a, get a more thorough report on what's, what is going.
We'll specifically add that. I mean, we have a conversation, and, and we usually, you know, we don't tell them what to present, they present, but it's usually been very condensed. Something like that would be...
I'd have him, yeah, I'd... I'd have them, yeah, I'd have them present what they're asking us to report back to them, you know?
That could certainly be part of the presentation that, that we can work in, yeah.
Bring those questions forward. What, what are you, what are you asking here?
Yeah, I'd like to add that the, um, as I sit through the admin finance portion of it, you do get a little more insight. And the management report does help. Um, it doesn't go through all the processes of everything, but I remember really enjoying some, some where their feedback was, they wanted to improve the process and at that point, you know, I got to hear who touched what. You know, it went from this, this person's hands to that person's hands, this person's hands. And then they recommended that we change that. So, yeah, that, that was interesting and we could, I think we can elaborate on that.
No one person does all, all the operations. Okay. Any other, uh, questions for staff? All righty, let's move on to the treasurer's report. You have a lot of reporting to do tonight.
I got the busy night tonight, guys. Uh, first of all, I'd like to request, uh, council's approval of warrant number fourteen fifteen oh four and the amount of seven hundred eighty one thousand, two hundred four dollars and forty nine cents from the list-
Before we did, we didn't have a work session today and I was hoping we can ask just a question or two on the warrant before he goes through it. Is it possible?
Well, yes, the questions usually once I present it.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Go ahead, okay.
Uh, and the amount of seven hundred eighty one thousand, two hundred four dollars and forty nine cents as well as payroll from the period ended June twenty sixth and the amount of two hundred and fifty one thousand, eight hundred ninety seven dollars, ninety nine cents for a total be approved of a million thirty three thousand, one hundred two dollars and forty eight cents.
All right, it's, uh, motion made to Alderman Marquez, second of Alderman Shower. Questions, Alderman Kenny?
What a, what a brain, what a brain fart that was. My, my apologies there.
That's okay.
My apologies there, folks. I'm not the new kid on the black mirror, so I can't use you as an excuse anymore. Um, under statue lighting, we did, that's, that's, that's the, that's where the Boy Scout did the project, uh, front last year.
Yeah.
Uh, and that was last year when I'm, I'm seeing two, twenty four hundred, forty eight dollars for lighting. Can I shed a little, shed a little light on that?
Sure. Uh, basically what it was is after the Boy Scout project was completed, we tried to put, uh, the Boy Scouts tried to put L E D lighting, uh, uh, to light up the area, the statues. Uh, when we looked at that, it was inadequate. Uh, so we looked at, uh, putting in additional electrical, uh, which included outlets, you know, G F I. Uh, also the existing lights, uh, had some issues. So, uh, new wiring was installed, was all done on a T and M basis. That T and M basis was also up per our contract unit pricing for labor, machinery and/or equi- uh, materials and supplies.
Okay.
You'd be surprised, I asked that very question before the city council meeting.
This should be a one-time shot though, right Dan? It's not like an annual maintenance thing.
No, that's correct. And also we have addition, additional outlet in there for whatever, uh-
Well, we were, we're, we, our sign is lit up there too, so it's combined, okay.
And electricity and water shouldn't ever go together, but in this case they do. Um, at least with my questions anyway. Scorpio Construction Water Main Break, fourteen thousand, eight hundred twelve dollars. Help me out here.
That's from the, uh, restoration. Scorpio Construction got the sod, uh, topsoil and sod contract this year. And with that, that's from all the restoration, I believe it was about seventy. I'd have to double check all the locations, but I believe it was approximately seventy locations, uh, from the water main breaks. Our staff did not have the opportunity and/or time to address those in a timely fashion. So we did hire off of that under the water department.
So it wasn't just one location?
Right.
It was many?
Yeah, multiple. And I know the, um, Treasurer Corn, I believe you have the list, uh, behind for the backup on it.
Yeah, if you want to see the backup, the detailed listing of it, but I mean, it's many locations and over the course of everything that was done over the winter and-
Okay. Uh, Christopher Burke, the Plainfield Road in Bailey, is that part of this, uh, traffic light thing where we're looking eighteen thousand dollars?
That is correct.
Okay.
For phase one and part of phase two.
I have no more questions, thank you.
Uh, I, I brought up another question before, before the work session. On page twelve and thirteen, we have, uh, we have some items that we're paying to the Village of Woodridge. Uh, that is a part of, uh, I, I'll let you explain it. It's part of the Page Water Commission costs. Go ahead, uh-
I guess I'll defer to Scott.
Oh, to Scott, okay.
And that, Scott, that's what I was talking about when I paid the bills. About the, uh, I think, what is it, the Shell gas station and the Darian Woodridge fire?
Yes, there is Woodridge Water Main that the businesses pay a billing to us, but they supply the water to us. Um, now, um, it had previously been handled by an employee that's now retired Clark Beatty. Since that time, it was getting sent over, but it was never getting paid. Uh, this was caught recently when we raised our, uh, our water, um, bill. So we've ended up having to pay them, uh, the amount going back to that time since we last paid.
So we're not going to see this large amount in the future. It'll be a smaller amounts because we're, these, these payments were catch-up.
These payments are catching up over the last three years.
Three years, okay.
Now, Scott, when I was paying the bills, I did ask you to go back and check for that one year, two thousand eleven, I believe.
That's correct. Their memo was incorrect stating two thousand twelve, it was actually two thousand eleven.
So it was, okay.
Correct.
So we are paying the correct amount then? So it goes back eleven, twelve and thirteen, we're paying for essentially in this one payment?
We are receiving that money back, um, through our, our normal water bills and our normal water collections as Shell and the Firehouse are paying us.
And the reason what the, this relationship exists is because Woodridge had the water main going down Lamont Road in the first place and it was silly for us to-
Correct, there's no reason for us to construct water main.
A water main line when we could just have an agreement for us, for our, our businesses and residents to share in that, in that water.
Yes, but we also don't want to turn it over to their system because we'll still make money off of it.
That's right, yes. Okay. Uh, any other questions on that rep, on that warrant? All right, let's move to the next. We need the vote. Yes, okay.
It's rubbing off, Mayor, it's rubbing off on you.
Yeah, I know, I, uh, but, go ahead, uh, the roll please.
Marquez?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
All right, Treasurer, do you want to go over the monthly report for April?
Okay, the monthly report for April, first I'd like to preface this with, these are not final numbers. I mean, we have had the audit done and we've put through all the audit numbers, audit adjustments we anticipate at this point. I wouldn't anticipate anything significant or consequential, but I did want to get the, at least the closest year and numbers we can get to at this point. Uh, we will be doing an update comparing these numbers to the projected budgeted numbers that we'll have. I was hoping to have that for tonight, but, uh, we will do that as part of a Finance Committee meeting. First of all, the Finance Committee can review each individual change once we get the final numbers from the audit and then the overall, uh, change. But, uh, my anticipation is, uh, the variances should be pretty much for, uh, to the positive. So I'm not expecting any negative surprises. That being said, the general fund, uh, for the April thirtieth, for the twelve months ended, reflects revenue of thirteen million, five hundred forty four thousand, twenty one dollars. Expenditures of ten million, three hundred eighty three thousand, four hundred seventy one dollars for ba- fund balance of four million, eighty four thousand, one hundred thirty seven dollars. Water fund year-to-date revenue of six million, forty seven thousand, eighty four dollars. Expenditures of six million, three hundred seventy nine thousand, one hundred forty four dollars for a current balance of five hundred forty thousand, four hundred and thirty five dollars. Motor fuel tax fund year-to-date revenue of six hundred fifty thousand, seven hundred seventy seven dollars. Expenditures, seven hundred ninety one thousand, thirty one dollars for a current balance of a hundred and fifty two thousand, four hundred and fifty four dollars. Water depreciation fund year-to-date revenue sixty three thousand, eight hundred seventy eight dollars. Expenditures of a hundred and forty two thousand, four hundred dollars for a current balance of six hundred sixty four thousand, one hundred ninety six dollars. Capital improvement fund year-to-date revenue of four million, four hundred twenty eight thousand, three hundred thirteen dollars. Uh, expenditures of three million, ten thousand, four hundred eighty one dollars for a current balance of five million, two hundred twenty eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty eight dollars. And capital projects debt service fund year-to-date revenue five hundred four thousand, three hundred twenty eight dollars and expenditures, four hundred ninety eight thousand, seven hundred seventy five dollars for a current balance of thirteen thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars.
Uh, the reason that, uh, the Treasurer mentioned that this is not, these are not final numbers is, uh, the city of Darian runs on a fiscal year. We go from May one to April thirtieth of the following year. We don't run our budget on a calendar year. So that's why he was mentioning that these numbers, uh, they're, they're final, but not perfectly final at this point, so. Any questions for that report, on that, uh, monthly report? Do you want to go to the next one?
Okay, and the first month of the new year for May thirty first. Uh, first thing I'd like to point out, in the general fund, if you notice, uh, we have a transfer of the capital fund of two million, five hundred, two thousand, one hundred seventy four dollars. That's the amount when we went through the budget meeting that we approved for the transfer to the capital improvement fund for the year. I like doing that right at the first of the year, so we take it out and we know exactly where things stand. So that trends, uh, transfer has already been made, uh, as of this month. Uh, and again, these numbers are, uh, the, they could change. The pen, the beginning number you'll see reflects unaudited. Once we do get the final numbers from the audit, we will update that for the audited numbers. But, uh, once again, general fund month, uh, and year-to-date revenue of nine hundred ninety six thousand, eighty seven dollars. Expenditures of one million, eighty thousand, six hundred twenty eight dollars for a current balance of one million, four hundred ninety seven thousand, four hundred and twenty three dollars. Water fund year-to-date revenue, seven thousand, nine hundred seventeen dollars. Expenditures, a hundred and forty two thousand, five hundred twenty four dollars. Current balance, four hundred, five thousand, eight hundred twenty seven dollars. Motor fuel tax fund, revenue of a hundred and forty three thousand, four hundred thirty one dollars. Expenditures, twenty five thousand, three hundred forty nine dollars. Current balance, two hundred seventy thousand, five hundred and thirty six dollars. Water depreciation fund, revenue of four hundred and three dollars, no expenditures. Current balance, six hundred sixty four thousand, five hundred and ninety nine dollars. Capital improvement fund year-to-date revenue, which largely reflects that transfer, two million, five hundred six thousand, three hundred eighty three dollars. Expenditures of one hundred ninety seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety five dollars for a current balance of seven million, five hundred thirty seven dollars and four hundred and seventeen dollars. Excuse me. Capital projects debt service fund, no year-to-date revenue. Expenditures of thirty six thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars, reflecting a deficit balance of twenty three thousand, three hundred and thirty seven dollars.
Any questions, uh, for the Treasurer on this report?
Uh, Mayor, I'm sorry, one comment. Uh, you might notice, uh, we started showing the federal, federal equitable sharing also under the property tax and sales tax collections as something just to monitor. Uh, the city council periodically ha- asks, asks about that. So you'll see that number now, uh, starting in May and on all the reports.
And what is it, Alderman, uh, Treasurer, Administrator Van, or what?
Oh, that, that's the, um, uh, basically the federal, uh, sharing we have from our task force officer. That's the money we're, we received.
Okay. Any other questions for the Treasurer? Let's move on to standing committee reports. Alderman Marquez?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. The Municipal Services Committee approved the minutes of the May twenty seventh, two thousand and fourteen Municipal Service Committee meeting and submitted that to the Clerk's office. And I'd like to announce that the next Municipal Services Committee meeting will take place on July twenty eighth, two thousand and fourteen here in the council chambers at six thirty.
Alderman MacIver?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to announce that the next Police Committee meeting is scheduled for Ju- Monday, July twenty first, two thousand and fourteen at six P M. in the Police Training Room there in, uh, across the parking lot. Pending agenda items.
Okay, Alderman Shower?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our next Admin Finance meeting will be held on Monday, August fourth, two thousand and fourteen at six P M. in our upstairs meeting room.
Thank you. Treasurer Corn?
I haven't talked enough yet tonight. The, the Police Pension Fund will have their quarterly review of the Annual Investment Performance Police Pension Fund on July thirtieth at seven P M. across the street in Police Training Room also.
And anyone can attend?
Yes, I'd like to have some company now and then, but, uh, unfortunately, we don't get too much participation.
I thi- I, I would imagine people that are, are number crunchers would be more excited about meetings like that.
Well, actually, anybody, uh, I find it fascinating because it's not just the numbers you're crunching, but you get to hear the perspective from our two investment advisors, each of them managing about eleven to twelve million dollars of the Police Pension Fund portfolio and get their perspective as, in terms of what's happened for the prior quarter as well as their anticipation for the coming year. So, I mean, if, even if you have individual investments and you're interested, uh, might be a way to get a little bit of insight.
Very good. Let's move on to questions, comments, agenda-related. Uh, do any, since we did not have a, a work session, uh, do any of the council members have any questions on any of the items on the consent agenda? Alderman MacIver?
All right, not to be a stick in the mud, but, um, item G, the, um, the redevelopment of the southwest corner of Cass. I guess I'm kind of wondering why we're moving forward with that so quickly. Um, as far as the clock tower goes.
Why?
Um, I don't know why we wouldn't, you know, I, I, I guess personally, I'm not convinced a clock tower and a fountain are the best use of that property and I think until we see what, you know, develops on the rest of the property. So I, I guess I don't know why we're rushing into this corner piece.
I could add a little bit, um, actually, and I don't know if I heard this wrong, but I almost thought it was supposed to be on new business, but I could have misinterpreted that. But, um, we certainly had a long discussion at our municipal meeting and I did have, you know, I did bring up some concerns with some of the expenses on here and, and scaling back some of the project. So we can talk about, you know, all of that, um, what was in the discussions. And we came up with some ideas as well to offset the costs. For example, uh, the paver blocks. We thought that if we had a vendor that could provide us blocks where we can have people donate, um, to have their names on them or in memory of or, or whatever, um, then we could have that go towards the reimbursement of the cost of the paving, for example. Uh, the other ideas that were suggested were when we get to the point of the benches, you know, maybe a be- a business might want to donate the bi- the bench with their name of their company on it. Um, and then I suggested for the landscaping, I thought it was pretty large, substantial, um, compared to what we've been spending. And, you know, the idea was to use the, um, garden club. Maybe they would do the volunteering of planting, you know, every year. I know they enjoy that type of project. So there were, there were some things thrown into the mix. I, you know, I think we should all welcome, you know, the comments of everybody.
I've already talked to the garden club, they would be, they would be, be very interested in doing something like this. Alderman Marquez?
As Alderman Belkey said, we had significant discussion on this. And one of the reasons that we felt we really needed to move forward with this is we felt this corner was going to kind of sell that development. Whether we were going to build it or this gentleman's going to build it, we really felt that that would stand out. It would make that corner stand out. And I, I got an email from a resident who said, no matter how you dial up the corner, it's still a strip mall. Well, I disagree with that. I, I personally believe that, uh, that it'll be easier to lease that site with that development there on that corner. Uh, Ros- uh, a leasing could say, I'm at the Darian Point. Where's that? Well, that's by the clock tower. There's an identification with that. And so that was one of the, that was my strong feelings on it. And Alderman Seifert felt the same way and I think he expressed that in an email that I think everybody received. Alderman Belkey had questions, like she said, and we, and we made a strong suggestion to Dan that it would, would be nice to be able to offer, uh, residents an opportunity to buy memorial bricks which can be made, uh, placed there with the pavers. Uh, might not necessarily offset the cost, but it would definitely be something that would draw people to that corner. But there was a very strong feeling by the, uh, at least by myself and Alderman Seifert that this project go ahead at the same time that the development's taking place. So, and it was our feeling that if we didn't do it, might not get done. And then that corner would just be a corner. And, uh, personally, you know, I've sat here for the last fourteen years or waiting for this corner to be developed. And while this is not the ideal cor- uh, situation that I think Mayor Weaver and I felt fourteen years ago when we first discussed this, that corner is going to bring a nice touch to that development and I, and I think Mayor Weaver would agree. At least this is going to be something that's going to be different and it's going to stand out. And that's the reason we really felt the need to push this forward and we approved it.
Treasurer Corn?
Yeah, Sylvia, sort of like you, I thought where we left it was, everybody was sort of going to get back together and decide, okay, do we want to go the fountain route? Do we just want to do the clock tower? And I was a little surprised to see it tonight myself, although I'm bad. I mean, I should have paid attention to Municipal Services and participated a little bit more in that discussion. I mean, I, I agree, we need something nice and very presentable there. I just thought this came on rather suddenly. And my only concern that I would have brought out at Municipal Services, uh, as far as adding the water features, splash areas, benches and everything, I'm a little bit concerned because there is very limited parking there. And I mean, I don't really think we intend to make a park where you're really trying to attract a lot of people. Because if you do and they just all go to the park, I don't think there's going to be a lot of parking available for the potential tenants that are going to be in there. Uh, as now we're adding a, a drinking fountain, a little splash pond, which again, they're, they're all nice and beautiful in the right po- park setting. But again, I just thought we were going to get back together and regroup and discuss these things. But again, I-
Let's, uh, let's take it off the consent agenda, put it, make it item D. under, uh, under new business uh, just for the purpose of, of continuing the discussion.
Yeah, I just want to, just to close out my point, and I'm sorry, Tina, that, you know, I see this as a finishing feature. You know, it's like putting up a fence before you build a house or, or put up your decorative, you know, lamp post or whatever before the structure's there because the structure may dictate a change in what we're thinking of putting there. And if that development doesn't go forward, perhaps that would be, having something already on that corner would be obstructing a potential development in a different direction. So I see it more as something that should follow, not, not lead, um, the development of the property for the leased space. for the leased spaces.
Okay.
We'll clarify that, too, because I think there's some timing issues with the developer building it that were at interest for, at least for the staff members, but we'll cover that during a discussion.
Yeah, I don't think it was going to be a case of this breaking ground like tomorrow. All right, so, what happens now is we've moved item G from consent agenda to item C under new business, and that causes items H, I, and J to be renumbered to G, H, and I for the viewing audience to review. Any other questions and any more discussion, any of the other items? Yes?
You can't shut me up tonight. Under old item H, it was really just a question for Dan in terms of the lighting on 75th Street in connection with the project here. I guess I'm just a little surprised it's indicating as part of this reconstruction, the county's taken down our lights, and now we're the ones that are going to be responsible for $150,000 for putting up new lights, if I'm...
We were always going to be responsible for it.
Well, we were.
We were, yeah.
Okay, they're not required to just replace what we had there?
No, no.
And we tried adamantly, until this evening, we were not going to have any replacement of streetlights. So, we were fortunate enough to work with the county and secure this grant. So, that's what gives us this opportunity now to put streetlights and theme lights within the construction zone area.
Our business district.
Mm-hmm.
With the gaslight concept. Alderman Belkey?
Yeah, that would be item I, I believe, for DUMEC. My question is, I know that we're talking about a 200, I'm sorry, 520 per officer financial contribution. I was just wondering if anybody put the numbers together to find what our return on investment is there?
The return on investment there is not an economic return. The fact of the matter is, is that we don't have the necessary expertise to conduct narcotic investigations within the city of Darien. Narcotic investigations are labor-intensive, and they require a certain level of expertise that it takes months to acquire. And so, the return on investment there is that DUMEC conducts the narcotic investigations within the city of Darien.
Okay. Any other questions on, any of the other items on the consent agenda? All right, let's move to new business. And does, whoops, any of the items under new business? Anybody have any questions? I have, go ahead, guys. Alderman Shower?
Yeah, I was just going to say that under item B, the consideration of a motion to approve resolution at quantities for Plainfield Road, that was approved 3-0 in admin finance this evening.
Okay. Alderman Marques, you have?
Item A under new business, I'm going to have to leave when we make that vote.
Okay. My question under item B was, and you were alluding to it earlier, Dan, about all of the facilities underground at that location. I was, my question was, is it, you've got, you've got a sewer line over a water main. When this is being, when the new water main is being put in, is it separated from, it just doesn't make sense to have a sewer line going over a water main as it is now with, you were talking about all the stacking going on in that location.
The answer is yes. The water main will be placed in a roadway now where it'll be in a five-foot depth.
Because now it's 12-foot?
12, correct.
Yeah, okay. Wow. The sewer, the other, the sewer system, the sewer line and the other utilities are going to stay in place?
Well, I've asked the county to consider replacing that one. It's deteriorated, wasn't identified on the plans, any plans at all, so even for the construction plans I'm referring to.
Okay.
So, county's looking at it currently.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Belkey?
Yeah, also on that item under new business, Dan, what we talked about in admin finance, about my question about while you're in there, about burying some of those wires?
Correct. And the question was in regards to the existing combat utility poles on the northern side of Plainfield Road. There's two existing poles that the city staff has worked adamantly, and we're finally going to get those two poles removed. So, there will be two poles, combat poles, that will be removed from the north side of Plainfield Road.
Is there a north side? There's a west or east side of Plainfield Road. Where would that be?
This is at Cass, where the water main project, for any colonial manner, and our development. There's two existing poles.
Oh, you mean on, okay, you mean on, on the north side of Plainfield Road. Oh, I understand what you mean now, okay. Alderman Belkey?
One more item, which would be C, and there, when I was...
Oh, I'm sorry, I failed to mention, item C is being pulled from the agenda this evening because we don't have the plat prepared for that. Sorry about that. I should have announced that sooner. Do we need to renumber that since we pulled it and make, since I took item G?
Right, G will now become C.
Okay. All righty. Item G that was on the consent agenda will now become item C under new business. Okay, any other questions on any of the new business items? Okay, then let's go back, I'd like to open up the floor to anyone in the audience that wanted to ask any questions or, ask any questions about any of the items on our agenda this I know we have the owner of Smilga's here tonight, so he's waiting patiently for our vote. If there's no questions on the agenda, then let me, let's move to, do we have old business on? We have old business as an item, but there is no old business tonight. So, I'll just move to the consent agenda, and I'm going to read all of the items on the consent agenda for the viewing audience. Item A is a motion to approve an ordinance granting a minor amendment to an approved planned unit development in our crossroads of Darien subdivision called Cafe Smilga, which is adding a outdoor cafe. Next item is a motion to approve an ordinance amending Title 5A, Chapter 5, General Provisions and Regulations of our Darien City Code regarding, it's a tax amendment and zoning ordinance on recreational vehicles, trailers, and snowplows. Item C is a motion to approve an ordinance amending Section 3-3-7-4, adding another Class D license to our Darien City Code. The next item is a motion to approve an ordinance amending Section 3-3-7-7, increasing the hours of Class G license in our Darien City Code. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the purchase of one new 2015 Ford F-250 crew cab, two-wheel-drive pickup from Bob Writing's Ford in the amount of $27,254. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution accepting a quote from Integrated Building Systems to repair the steel columns and structural support jams and remove the existing mansard roof facade and fascia at the building on our public works, at our public works facility located at 1041 South Frontage Road at a cost not to exceed $50,800. Item G is a motion to approve the engineering services with the county of DePage for the replacement of streetlights within DePage County 75th Street Improvement Project Limits. Item G is a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the sale, did I have that correct? Item H is the motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the sale of personal property owned by the city of Darien. And the last item under the consent agenda is a motion to approve the annual dues payment to, for the Darien Police Department, participation within DUMEC, which is the DePage Metropolitan Enforcement Group. Do I have a motion to approve all of those items? Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Belkey? The roll, please. Kenny?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
McIver?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Six ayes, one absent. All the items have been approved. Let's move on to new business, and the first, first item, A, is a motion to approve an ordinance amending Section 3-3-7-3 regarding a Class C license in our Darien City Code, which is, is owned by Carriage Green Country Club, and that is amending their hours of operation. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belkey? Any questions, any discussion? The roll, please. Shower?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Marques?
Kenny?
Aye.
McIver?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent. The motion has been approved. The next item is a motion to approve an ordinance, to approve a resolution to add quantities for the Plainfield Road water main project on Plainfield Road through the existing intergovernmental agreement with the county of DePage in an amount not to exceed $35,000. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman McIver? We did have some discussion, so the roll, please. Shower?
Aye.
McIver?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Five ayes and one, I mean, six ayes and one absent. We've been moving fast here. The motion has been approved. Item C has been pulled, so the new item C is a motion to authorize staff to proceed with the following amenities for the redevelopment of the southwest corner of Cass Avenue and Plainfield Road in an amount not to exceed $163,055, consisting of the following items: one clock tower, three clocks and chime set, one fountain feature, one landscape design, and a water fountain slash misting station. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Marques, seconded by Alderman Belzak? Discussion.
Mayor, one quick comment is, we're calling this the southwest corner of Cass and Plainfield.
It's, no, it isn't. It is the southeast.
Yeah, it's the southwest corner, maybe of the development parcel, but actually of the intersection, it's not, but...
It's actually the southeast corner.
Southeast corner of the intersection. So, we're saying, when we're writing it, we're writing it as a development, if we would have said that as a development corner, but the way it's written should not, it should be the southeast.
It'd be northeast.
I'm sorry, northeast.
We're going to get it right. We're going to get it right anytime, okay. That is...
I started something tonight, I don't know what I did.
It's, yeah, everybody's got the hiccups now.
I wanted to add more to the discussion of what we had, and one of the ideas for this was my idea to do it in phases, and what was brought up is that nobody wanted it to look halfway done or partially done, and I was saying, well, maybe, you know, I'm not saying not to complete it, but maybe hold off on the grand landscaping, let's say, for the first year, and then you add on, or you add the, you know, little by little, you could add some things where it doesn't look unfinished. That was one idea. And then, the other idea, I mean, my concern that I had was I agree with the whole concept, and I agree that we need something, and I agree that it's a statement for the city. I just didn't want to over-improve the statement. So, I just thought, is there a way to still have the utility of it and still have the beauty of the project without spending as much as we're spending on it? So, for example, the chime, you know, do we need the sound system? Do we need it to be lit up at night? Those are some of the things that maybe could be taking away, that doesn't take away the whole grand scheme of the whole project.
Brian?
Just a clarification, you know, there's a couple of things when we're talking about the, this, what we'll call the amenity. One is, you know, the cost of this, and one, I think Alderman McIver mentioned, are we rushing this? And I think in terms of what the staff is trying to do is similar to what we did with the building. We're trying to get some plan that can be encompassed and finalized, so we, there's a known product. The developer's actually going to be constructing this amenity, and we'll credit them at closing. But, Dan, in terms of the construction schedule, I'm, you know, the developer would not construct this, obviously, before the buildings. So, timing-wise, it's, we wouldn't have this amenity and nothing else. So, maybe, is that the timing plays a role in this also, because the developer does have lead time to get some of these things ordered, planned, prepared, and actually get working drawings done?
And that's part of the concern or the problem. So, if I might take a minute, Madam Mayor, to kind of go through the process, where we've been, what we've done, what we've looked at, what the committee has also discussed. There's a lot of moving parts, literally, in this project. First of all, the tower itself, this isn't a one-stop shop where we're just going to a manufacturer and saying, okay, we want all these components built into one. We could do that, but we're going to pay a premium price, a very heavy premium price. What staff has done, we've looked at the components from the tower itself to the clocks, to the chime system, to the landscaping. So, just back another minute, originally what we looked at was a square shape of a tower. After looking at it, that cost was a lot higher, just for the steel structure itself was $100,000. So, we looked back and said, what could we do to, you know, scale it down? So, from that perspective, we scaled it down to the shape of a triangle. Why a triangle? The community has always said and referred to as the coal quadrant as a triangle, so we took some approach as, let's create this as a triangle. So, now, this triangle is basically 18-foot by 18-foot by 18-foot.
Do we have a rendering? Do we know what we're buying?
No, and part of it is, it's a design build. Staff came up with the idea, we didn't want to take on an extra cost by having an architect start to draw this up. Yes, we could, but that's another $3,500. Does staff have the ability to do a real rough, rough sketch? The goal of this was to pass this on to the developer and ask him for some type of rendering at his cost. Once, and let me continue, but I'll answer your question finally at the end, we reached out to approximately 10 to 15 companies in regards to this tower. What the tower is made of is cylindrical columns ranging from sizes 6 inches up to 12 inches. The height of this is going to be 30-foot high. In conjunction with that, if you could picture the triangle, the cylindrical pipes, in conjunction with the interior, the upper, let's call it 10 feet, has tubing, steel tubing, in other words, tubes of steel that are rolled and welded together and put in random orientations on the structure itself. So, it's basically circles in a nutshell. With that, the steel fabricator that we finally had seeked out and was willing to build this, we said, okay, now we have to reach out to the clock company and see what type of clock would be adequate for this type of monument. So, we reached out to a company called Verdant Clock Company out of Ohio. Well-known, well-respected, quality, not top of the, we'll call it, top of the line. They were able to come back, and we were proposing is three 6-foot clocks. The purpose of the clocks were to be able to look at them from Plainfield Road and Cass Avenue as well as at the mall. So, the orientation, you'd have to understand how the corner currently sits in order to be able to see this triangle and the clocks. Yes, we put in an option. That option was having it backlit. We felt that with the entire development, it all pulls the entire corner together as the center of town, because we don't have a downtown, a true downtown center. So, the backlighting just kind of added to the ambiance of the entire development. The next issue was the chimes. Yes, we can eliminate the chimes. The chimes are also an option. The chimes come into play during the holidays, special events, whether it's school events, community events, to be able to have something in that respect. It is an option. That is correct. The fountain, the fountain feature itself, that, again, is an option. It's probably the least expensive out of all the items that are out there. The ability to have the tranquility of water below this 18-by-18-by-18-shaped triangle structure, and basically what this water does is it shoots up, when I say shoots up in the air, goes over a four, a rock, some type of rocks. There's three to four rocks that are oriented in there and basically splash over the rocks, if everyone can picture that. Beyond that, then, we go into the landscaping. Landscaping has many elements of it. We have retaining walls, and while, in respect to the landscaping plan, we reached out to a resident who owns the landscaping, and he had prepared the plan for us at no cost. Everything we looked at was bare bones and with designs of no cost to the city at this point. The landscaping design encompasses Brickyard, this Brickyard, and let me back up for a minute. Immediately out of the structure of the triangle, we have a retaining wall. That retaining wall is basically to house some of the fountain effects. In conjunction with, between the fountain and the bench seat that will be sit... In conjunction with, between the fountain and the bench seat that will be situated around the entire steel structure is a planter area. That planting area would give, uh, whoever, in an organization, the opportunity to plant different flowers, uh, whether they're perennials, annuals, and something that has a lot of color, so it's not just putting one variety of plant in there. From there, on the outside of that planter area, we have what's referred to as the bench seating, again, the shape of a triangle, which gives patrons the opportunity to sit there. Beyond that, we basically have the courtyard, which consists of the bricks. Um, we also talked quite extensively in regards to the bricks about buy a brick program, uh, or some type of brick program, which again, with no prices were set on there, that could be done based on the amount of bricks, there's an opportunity for a return on investment eventually. Um, in conjunction with that, we also have landscaping. The landscaping is probably a little bit more of a top-notch landscaping, it's not a single parkway tree, it's, it's berms along with colorful landscaping. And yes, there's different options of landscaping, if all landscaping isn't done this year, that's done next year. The committee also had discussed somewhat of doing it all at one point, one time, it becomes an economy of scale to do certain things at a given time versus coming back in later and trying to go over paper blocks to put in berms, let's say, or whatever the case is. In conjunction with that, the sign, we have a monument sign with chase that also will be coordinated, uh, within this corner. Please recall that during the chase negotiation, that chase would be permitted to put a sign on that corner, so we wanted to make sure the elements of the sign, the chase sign, in conjunction with the clock tower, there was an opportunity for this clock tower to stand out. So, by cutting it back, uh, I just want to be very cautious with what are we cutting back and what features are we looking at not having?
Dan, let's just say, though, the developer starts August first, um, let's just say September first, they're starting construction on the building. If we waited and, and, you know, and, and planned it or, or fitted it afterwards, I don't know how long the, the steel takes to make or that thing, what's the lead, leeway time on that?
The lead times right now from the steel fabricator are approximately two to three months, so that's the first part. Then you have the clock portion, so we'd be very fortunate to be able to get the landscaping in by fall. Um, so, again, and kind of know when the construction starts, and, and you're correct, this portion of it, while it's working, the site wouldn't be prepped until the actual, the tower came. You can't do any of the work without erecting the tower first and doing the legwork for it, literally.
Okay, so, with the developer's contribution, this is over a two-hundred-thousand-dollar project.
Two-hundred and, uh, I believe it was two-hundred-and-five-thousand, if I'm, or...
Two-hundred-and-eight.
Two-hundred-and-eight, excuse me. Yeah, two-hundred-and-eights and the city's portion.
Thirteen if you want.
Yeah. Two-hundred-and-thirteen, yeah. Two-thirteen. I think I did the math, right? Yep, yep. So, and, and I work in design-build, and the key word there is design, so somewhere, you know, you have some kind of design in mind, because you're talking about the structures and what it's gonna look like in six-foot clocks. My point is, we haven't even closed on this property, so I'm very hesitant to, to, to vote for this expense. I'm assuming you're wanting to order this, some of these, this equipment that's already listed.
We're not gonna order it. What would happen is, we would give direction to the developer, we would give direction to, uh, the vendors, that this is the developer, and obviously if this deal fell through, meaning the, uh, development itself, this would fall by the wayside at the same time. So, nothing, you know, just by the city council authorizing that this evening, we would not, you know, and if a contingent, I guess, upon the development, we had good intentions of having the development on the agenda this evening, but due to, uh, development issue, we had to pull it off.
Yeah, the, the original, the approved development agreement, uh, addresses this by saying the developer is going to build it and responsible for it, so, yeah, we would not order any of that.
I, I have a couple more comments. Now that I look at this, first of all, um, it's on the consent agenda, but the numbers changed, so whatever we discussed at the municipal was not approved as it's presented tonight.
That might've been, right, that might've been an error, I know it was.
So, that, that, you know, right there, um, the old figure was two-oh-eight-oh-fifty-five.
Oh.
And, and the difference, the delta is that water fountain.
The misting thing.
The misting thing.
Yeah.
So, um, and how I feel about the misting thing, I don't, I don't think that's the right, um, area, I wish we did have a park that had that. Gosh, I've been to one recently, it's so nice, but I don't think that's the right area for that. I mean, you are close to cars, and it just doesn't seem like, I, I wish, I do wish, but I don't think it's appropriate for that location. Um, but I don't think, I think that we maybe can table this and just do, have it as old business next time, so we get our, you know, thoughts on what options we would like. Does that make sense? You know?
If you table, table means that you're gonna vote on it by the end of the evening. What you would need to do is remove it and then put it on the agenda.
Move it and then re, as old?
As, well, not necessarily old, if you remove it before, it, it could be old business, or you could just remove it and not, and have it on the next agenda. But you, if you table, it means you have to vote on it this evening.
Later, anyway. Or toward the end of the evening.
Well, I may be the only person that feels this way about this particular item, I'm just not...
Well, I'm, I, the way I pres- I did have my concerns, I did voice them, and I wanted this to go through with all the options, so that's why I voted yes, because I do want, I don't want to take anything away without the input of, of all the councils seeing everything as an option first.
Alderman, Kenny?
Have we talked to any non-for-profits at all to help absorb some of the costs, like Hinsdale Rotary Club has got a clock tower in downtown Hinsdale? I mean, I know we were, this was discussed back in March, and I know it was not at that meeting when we just, you know, first brought these out. Is there any, any thought about that, that's from, from a financial standpoint?
I don't think, I don't think we've talked to anybody about getting involved in it.
No, I just understand you're looking for, like, elements, whether it's the steel or the...
They would contribute to it.
They would contribute, they would contribute, so you, you would have, you would have the Lions Club, or Rotary, or Kiwanis, or whatever, you know, logo on, on portion of this, and they would, and we can, you know, help them, it's, because sometimes these non-for-profits, they do, they do projects, and Hinsdale did a, a project in downtown Hinsdale.
I think the opportunity's always there, it's just, right now, what we're looking at is this concept, so, again, if we're looking for donation...
I wouldn't want to have these, these non-profits logos all over the, that I, I...
Actually, Alderman, Kenny, what we did, I went back and I was actually talking to Jim Kaiser, and I mentioned to him after the meeting last week, that there is a possibility that, um, maybe the Lions Club could buy a bench, because these benches are gonna be more permanent, or, and the women's club. So, there, there is an opportunity to do that, because the benches are not included in this cost. The wall that Dan's talking, we actually saw a drawing of this, Alderman MacIver, last week, uh, the gentleman who, the private firm in Darien actually provided us with a picture, so we saw an aerial view of what it looked like. We didn't see the clock, the clock tower itself, because we saw it as if you were looking at it from above, so we could see where the pavers were and the landscaping. But we discussed that, Joe, and we discussed, but that would be post the approval and the construction, to go back to these organizations within the city and say, you know, would you buy the bench? And we're not looking to have the Darien Lions Memorial Flower Bed and the Darien Women's Memorial Bench. We weren't, we didn't want to overdo that, as Mayor Weaver said, but we were looking for some opportunities to provide our local organizations a chance to do that. And that, and that was well-received, just by the one person I talked to. I know it would be a board issue for the Lions Club next year to discuss it, but, you know, it, it's something that could be brought up after this project is approved.
I don't know if I want you to talk anymore. Treasurer Corns got his hand up, I don't know if we should let him talk anymore, go ahead, go ahead, Treasurer Corns.
I, I have one question, and then just more an overall comment. The one question, the chime and the sound system, while it sounds lovely, it does border on a residential area, too. Have we concur, uh, talked to the developer, because, I mean, those are his tenants and everything that would be immediately behind it, and while it sounds like...
Well, then we better talk to St. John Lutheran Church, because they have the chimes that go off on the hour, uh, and that's next to our residential neighborhood, too.
And Our Lady of Peace does, too.
But this is something we're, this is something we're putting in, okay? And then I guess my overall comment would be, again, it just seems like, as Alderman MacIver's indicated, just feel like we're jumping the gun. Typically, I know, we, we didn't have this in the budget, so this is not a budgeted item, but we didn't have the sale of the property in the budget either, so, sort of offsets, but typically, when you have something this size, you put it in the following year's budget, and as Alderman Pateroski used to say, then it's competing with other things. I mean, two-hundred-thousand dollars is another ditch project for Dan, if he wanted to do it. Uh, I'm not saying I'd rather do a ditch project than this, I mean, I think this is a lovely idea, I think it is necessary for our downtown Darien, but I just sort of feel like Alderman MacIver, that all of a sudden this thing's just thrown out and here's two-hundred-thousand dollars, that, again, I thought we were gonna talk, come back and talk about, like, some of these more mundane little issues.
Well, Mike, it's a hundred-and-sixty-seven, though, right?
Right, net of the, net of the...
The net, there's a net to that, okay.
Mayor Weaver, this, what we did agree to is, this was gonna come to Municipal Services Committee after Dan did the exploration of how to do this. What this, what the council charged Dan with, with the task of putting together the components, just as we did with the, with the entryway signs, and that it was gonna go to Municipal Services, so I don't understand why council's sitting here saying this kind of surprised them to be on the agenda. It, it, I mean, I could look at it and say, who approved, well, Admin Finance approved this, but we didn't get to talk about that as a council. Our committee was given the task of going over the components, discussing it, and making that recommendation, so this shouldn't come as a surprise to anybody sitting on this council.
Yeah, the first step, I think, we, uh, staff came to the council, um, and we were given direction to get pricing on this and go to Municipal Services at that point, and I think that's what, you know, Dan did, is, is get all the pricing, because early on, we, we had, I think from our consultant, Dan, we had a, just a, a very vague cost. So, the purpose of this was to really better identify the cost for this.
Plus, it was in excess of what we had proposed here, too.
Um, I, I, you know, I'm not, um, trying to get on Municipal Services, I think you guys did exactly what you were tasked to do. Um, I think that what is missing, so, I mean, look at what we did with the, um, Welcome to Darien signs, we looked at them, we saw them in different colors, you know, and they were much less expensive than this clock tower. I mean, I think, I'm not opposed to the development of this corner, I just wonder if some of these things are overkill. I mean, six-foot, three-six-foot diameter clocks, thirty feet in the air, you know, how is that gonna look from a perspective? You know, it's hard for me to picture that, but that sure seems huge to me. I mean, those are, that seems like a really big clock, and, you know, I see it, you know, even a smaller clock by a train station, say, like in downtown Downers Grove, they've got a, a small clock over there, and it makes sense, because you're catching a train. So, you know, is, is that the best use of those development funds for that corner, I guess, is what I'm saying. I mean, I'm not sold on the whole clock tower idea, personally. I, I mean, I never have been. I mean, from, from the beginning, I've always expressed a concern about that corner being used in that way with, you know, obviously, yes, it needs to be nicely finished, but, you know, a structure like that seems like overkill to me.
Dan, the original, uh, original concept that was drawn, uh, that, you know, we looked at, had the clock tower, that was not to dimension or not to scale at that point, correct?
Well, it was not to scale, there was an approximate, uh, dimension, if you want to say.
So, what, what we did have was, we had the landscape plan from the resident, and we had, we had the tower depicted on there, I don't think we had the water fountain, uh, or the, the water feature.
Well, the original portion, uh, came back from Shive, Shive Hattery, as you recall, is a ten-thousand-dollar, uh, cost for the architectural, uh, details, or I believe it was the architect, architectural renderings, I won't say details, for a square type of fountain. Um, with that, the size, the height is very similar.
So, we had preliminary, but we have not had a final picture, then, of what we're explaining tonight, correct, Dan?
Yes.
Which is what you said, we, you would hope the developer would, or would ask the developer to do the final rendering before it's, I guess, before it's completed or finalized?
Alderman Belkey?
Now, the plans that we saw at our meeting, are they, those aren't available for the rest of the council?
I do have them, but unfortunately, there's only one copy. Um, again, we weren't able to copy the plans that we do have, I'll be more than happy to share them.
I think, I think we should show, you know, everybody, I think that helps conceptualize how much, and also, Dan, you gave us some dimensions, um, to give us a perspective of how tall these towers would lie, using other buildings, didn't you?
Reviewing audience for the city councils, if we look at the water tower on Plainfield Road, if we were to look at the first three rings of the water tower, and those panels are ten-foot high, and when you stand up next to them, you can see the weld seams on there, those are a height of approximately ten-foot. So, thirty-foot is basically three seams high. Currently, the pile, the pile of grannies that are out there is probably close to twenty feet, if that kind of puts things in perspective.
It does, that definitely does, yeah, that pile of, of, at the, at the back end of that lot, you're talking about, twenty feet. Okay, so the one that's on the south end there?
Yes, that big pile.
Yes, that, that's... I was just at gym, so I know the pile. Yeah, yeah, so that's twenty feet.
You know, if we didn't have that measured tomorrow, um, we'll get an exact figure out there, so that's...
Yeah, so that gives you a much better idea of how tall. I guess what I'd be comfortable with, and it's not the way the agenda item is presented, obviously, is the budgetary number for that improvement, but finding, you know, pending final agreement of the council... I think that's what, I think that's what's gonna happen. Because this is, well, this, this agenda item's very specific as to what it covers, that's why I'm not comfortable with, you know, one, you know, it's very specific as to where the funds are going, and it's, it's outlined that way. And, um, so, I guess I'm more comfortable with the, the mo- the funding of that improvement, and then finally, you know, as a not-to-exceed, and then whatever that final improvement is, but, um, the agenda item is written, I'm not comfortable, I, I will not support that. I can't support the way it's written tonight. Well, let's move ahead with a vote on this. We have a mover and seconder?
Yes. Marques?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Belkey?
No.
Kenny?
No.
MacIver?
No.
Shower?
Aye.
And we, uh, need the mayor to vote to break the tie, because we have three-three, and we have one person absent.
Wow, that, this hasn't happened, I, I don't think since I've been, I was elected. Good time for the Boy Scouts to be here. Yes, I tell ya, the first time. Aye, aye, my vote is aye.
We have four ayes, three nays, and one absent.
The motion has been approved. It doesn't take a supermajority on that one, right? No, okay. All right, let's, uh, let's move to questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. Alderman Belkey?
Yes, I wanted to, um, announce again that I am having a town hall meeting on Tuesday, July twenty-second, at the library from seven to eight-thirty. I was hoping that that would be put in the Neighbor's Magazine, and somehow it didn't end up in there, so, uh, if you could please make that as a calendar note, I will do my best to communicate to everybody, and then I will, again, uh, remind everybody at our next council meeting.
Very good, thank you. Could I put, go on the Darien Connect?
And it, and I will ask for Scott to answer.
We can put that in Direct Connect, yeah, we can put it in Direct Connect. Uh, any other comments, uh, of general nature? I said my thank yous, did Alliance Club, great job for the parade this year, I think it, I think it was a hit. Um, any com- questions, comments, or announcements from the, from anyone in the audience? Then I'd like to ask for a motion.
I got one question.
Yes, yes.
I got one question. Gentlemen, what'd you learn tonight?
Would, would you like, would you like to come up and address this?
No pressure on your shoulders.
Yes.
Don't worry.
I think they earned their badge just by sticking it out.
This meeting is going too long.
Well, I tell ya, I, I tried to, I tried to mention a few things to help you understand what we do here, like, for the budget, you know, how we, how we budget, and, uh, did we intrigue you, did we confuse you? What, how, how did we come across? Say what?
Did you come to the microphone?
Yeah, would, would you mind coming to the microphone? Oh, golly, okay, can you speak a little bit louder from there, then?
No pressure, buddy. You couldn't understand it?
Tell me outside, tell me outside, I'm not gonna put you on the spot.
I wanted to mention one thing.
Okay. Okay, if you want, if you want to, you know, tell us what you were thinking after
Okay, if you want, if you want to, you know, tell us what you were thinking after the meeting, that'd be great, too. But I, Brian, you have something?
Yeah, just, one of the things that was, the admin committee just briefly talked about at the end of the meeting, was this year's parade route, and there was interest, because there was a lot of positive comments of the route, and we talked about a quick survey that we would send out. Scott put together a quick survey that we would put out in Direct Connect, like a monkey survey like we had, just asking residents if they preferred last year's route or this year's route. But if, you know, we haven't talked about, you know, permanently changing the route, if the council's interested, we would send out this survey.
Well, I, what was Alliance Club gonna do, they were gonna do a survey, too, weren't they?
I think so. I think so, we don't know, I, I don't think Tom or I could say for sure, but I think we were, we wanted to get feedback on the, on the route, so that we could make a decision for next year.
Yeah, I mean, we could send ours out on Direct Connect, it's just a large group, but I didn't want to send that out without.
You know what, I, I really think that if you send it out, the data that you would collect, we would use that data to help us make our decision.
Okay.
Okay.
Why duplicate your efforts?
Yeah, so we can go ahead and do that.
Well, we didn't want to step in your toes, either, but, I mean, so let's work together here, if we can.
You've got the vehicle to do it, we don't.
Okay, okay, so we'll get it out, we'll get the survey out in Direct Connect, to see what the residents are thinking.
And that came as a recommendation from, actually Sergeant Pickley, and the police committee came, or Police Department came, came as a resident, and my ward came over and, to talk about that route, suggesting that route, and it came from the Police Department. So, I thought that was a really good idea, to avoid all the construction.
Yeah, and, yes, very good.
And I wanted to add, where, where the way that the route went this year, because of the construction, we could also look at reversing the route, so that you end at Jewel, and have the ice cream social at the place that we're used to as well.
Well, and that's a big question, I, I'm sure that's gonna be a big question, will the Jewel be willing to participate in, in staging, like they did?
The Jewel is interested in staging, one of the, someone told me, I think it was Jeff McCula, that he sold the manager on the idea that if we went down Seventy-Fifth Street, you would have impediments to your customers till about eleven o'clock. But if you stage it at Jewel, once we're off, off Cass Avenue, that corner's open to your, to your customers. So, I don't think he'd be so happy having us come back there, as, because I think.
As opposed to staging and leaving the area?
Because then that corner was open to everybody at that point. Once we turned, the end of the parade turned down Seventy-first Street, Cass was open again.
Yeah.
And, and so, rather than eleven o'clock, it was what?
Yeah.
Ten o'clock.
Yeah, okay, good thought, good thought. Okay, so, I've covered everything, okay. Motion to adjourn, Alderman MacGyver, seconded by Alderman Belkey, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And, did you have any candy left?
No, I got right to the end.
Turning the microphones off.
I was throwing it out right at the last cycle.
Well, that's right, I, I didn't realize you're the.